Good evening, everyone. Would you all please stand for the pledge? Mr. Forrester, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see such a big crowd. This is a special event tonight. We're going to welcome several faculty members and our probationary administrator to the ranks of the tenure, and we're just so thrilled. And that will be towards the beginning of the meeting, so we will do that. And as a former colleague used to say, after we do that, you can stay if you want to, but you don't have to. But welcome aboard.
Welcome to stay.
Right. So we will turn to Mr. Tenorio for some missed trivia.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the March 9 regular board meeting agenda. Second?
All in favor? Aye. Okay.
I entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of February 17, 2022. Second?
All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Okay.
And thirdly, entertain a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes of March 2, 2022. Second?
Questions? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you. So this brings us to item two, student battery report. Mr. Gina.
Hope you'll look at my outfit.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Perfect.
You're gonna sing to us.
Yeah. Our winter sports have come to a close. The boys' basketball team was third seed in sectionals and lost in the semifinals. And our girls' team was fifth seed in sectionals and also lost in the semifinals. I have the stats for the girls' team because Mrs. Harvey gave them to us at the end of our season party today. Brogan Henderson is an exceptional senior for Geneseo. Mary Claire Rollins, Tessa Riley, and Brogan are all NCAA All-Stars for this season. Our technology department is participating in Tech Wars next Thursday, the 17th, at the Batavia GCC. Our brainstormers are two and all of the season, and our next meet is tomorrow. Spring sports start on Monday. Our winter sports award ceremony is also Monday. We had high school band members in Harries All County last weekend. They were Joey DeBauw, Regina Cuchira, wait, that's me, Daphne Daphne Hazel, April Ford, and Kirsten Nabbit. And the show is next weekend. Tonight's our first costume run, so for any of you who don't know me, I promise I don't normally wear floral pants, too. The tickets are on sale during middle school and high school lunches during the day, and then from 5:00 to 7:00 at night for the rest of this week and next week. Eight dollars for student seniors, ten dollars for adults. Friday at 7:00, Saturday 2:00, 7:00. Any questions?
Wonderfully done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jamie, you're up.
Thanks. Middle School, High School Ski Club wrapped up its season skiing at Sway last Thursday. The middle school page trainers won their fall competition in December. They just had their winter one and won again, so they're going to the sectional finals on May 10. And for sports, modified swimming has started, and they've had their first few meets so far. And most winter sports have ended as students are preparing for the spring season, March 28. Any questions?
Very good. Very thank. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, now we, item three, appointment to tenure. I was talking to Mr. Tenorio before the meeting started, and we agreed two of the highlights of being a board member are graduation and the day we grant tenure to our new teachers. So we're thrilled about this. Thank you to Mrs. Coletta for setting this up. And so, Mrs. Flowers?
Yes. Well, certainly, as you said, Mr. Dwyer, achieving tenure is a great achievement in any teacher's career. Doing it during a worldwide pandemic makes it even more important. And I'm proud to say that the teachers before you have gone above and beyond, and administrator, to meet the needs of our children, our families, and to support each other. So thank you for all that you've done. These tenure appointments, most of them will be in September, so as Mr. Hayes used to say, just be mindful of that during your summer plans, that, you know, it does not take effect until September. Mrs. Sotora's effective date is different, and then if we've had some unpaid leave, your tenure date would be adjusted as well. So as I call your name, come on up. In this bag, there is a cookie, a flower, and of course, the Geneseo pen. So we'll start with Mrs. Samantha Brown.
Congratulations. Get a picture? Thank you.
Lori teaches fifth grade.
Congratulations. Wonderful. Picture? Okay, thank you.
Becca? Becca Gerold is our ESSL teacher and a wonderful candidate for ESSL.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, if you're wondering about the number, Mrs. Sotora is very busy doing observations in the elementary teachers, because most of her staff is on tenure. Jessica Ramastal. Jessica teaches fourth grade in elementary.
Photo?
Katie Renner, also teaches fourth grade. Mrs. Sotora.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all. They actually have connecting rooms.
Ah, all right.
And I just want to give a special thanks to Mrs. Sotora. Sarah Toby. Sarah teaches in first grade.
Photo?
Emma Wendell. Emma teaches second grade. She certainly came into the elementary building and transformed that environment. And it is a colorful, welcoming, fun, but a place where everyone's working hard, children are achieving, our families are supportive because of you, and thank you. Thank you, and congratulations to you all. And as Mr. Dwyer said, you can go. Of course, you're not forced to leave.
Congratulations again, everyone, and thank you. Okay, switching to administrative updates. Ms. Miller is here somewhere.
She's getting a picture of the group.
We could switch, maybe go to Mr. Holt first.
Sure thing. I promised to be brief. I know we just had a technology presentation a couple of weeks ago. A couple of things to update people on. First, I wanted to thank the finance committee. I know that we had talked about adding another position to support technology in the district. With the quantity of physical hardware that was purchased over the last couple of years, it's going to be extremely helpful and work. Fortunately, that someone is going to be starting on Monday from AgdiTech from Bosys. It's going to be helping support the technology. It's going to eventually be three days a week, but they're going to start off because, like everyone there in the class of hiring right now as well, so they can get someone starting on Monday for two days a week. So that's going to be extremely helpful. So once again, thanks for the support for that. Second, still working on our technology plan that's going to be submitted to me next date at the end of the school year. We've had two technology meetings that have gone well. We've gathered input from the staff as far as what is working with technology, where they want us to go, and we're using that as a jump-off point. A parent survey was just sent out, and we already have about eighty responses to that. It's going to be open for a couple of weeks, and then we're going to have a parent evening Zoom meeting, because I didn't obviously invite the full technology meeting, too. But I think it's easier for parents to be accessible in the evening, so we'll see what that turnout's like. But it is really good feedback. Some of it's critical. It's not all great, but I think that's a good way to grow. So I'm looking forward to hearing more input from all the stakeholders and then have that final technology plan that we submit later in the school year. Thanks.
Excellent report. Thank you, John, for all you do.
Sure.
Okay, we reversed.
Yeah, sorry.
It's not a problem. We're flexible.
Not that I'm talking around the side by any means.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Yes. Couple of updates. This past week, we had our first ESSL or L Technology Night. It was something that we had put in one of our grants last year, and just due to the circumstances, weren't able to conduct that. So we're able to do that this year. Really want to commend Becca, who just left, and Sarah Kelly for organizing that. It was a big undertaking for them, and want to thank Jay Ballard for helping with transportation. A lot of our L families don't have transportation, so it's a challenge to be able to get them into the building. Also want to thank Auburn, who is through Bosys. They really helped facilitate a lot of things that relate to Ls. They provided food for families, and our four NJHS members who volunteered and became with the children that came afterward. So it was very successful, so now some of those participants have an email set up. They didn't all have email, so they have their own email set up and practice emailing teachers. So again, we're working on that two-way communication. I mentioned, you know, much earlier, we utilize Proprio to communicate out and communicate in, but this is another avenue in which they're able to do that. So we had hoped to do a couple more, so we'll see how that goes, offering a couple other sessions to show them different things, you know, even giving them a school tool and looking at grades and things of that nature. So another highlight with student services, I mentioned in linkages, we relooked at our student needs in special ed. And this year, we eliminated two of our special classes to provide more opportunities for our special ed students to work with our gen ed population and have access to our grade level standards. It's something that I mentioned in linkages, the state concept's a target for students, and that's of 60% of special ed students are involved in gen ed, 80% of their day, and we're happy to report that 64% of our special ed students are participating in general services. So again, I want to thank Theresa McDonald, who really was thoughtful about all of that, and definitely our special ed and gen ed staff members that were open to looking at how we can better serve students more often in our gen ed setting. The last thing I just wanted to highlight, at the end of May, we'll have all our K-12 teachers and L teachers, special ed staff, and TA, and that supports reading, as well as our two-speech pathologists trained in letters, which stands for Language Essentials for Reading and Spelling. And again, when we, I've mentioned triangles many times in some of my updates or presentations, we're looking at that Tier One instruction focusing on literacy. And the letters training isn't a program, but a way to further develop our teachers' skill in understanding literacy and how to teach reading. So just really excited that we were able to provide all of the primary-level teachers that opportunity to engage in that. It's pretty intensive. It's six days, and it's been online. So even the, I think that also shows just how lucky we are to get substitutes in our building. So just excited that our teachers were able to do that. And the last thing I just want to update on, we've been utilizing fellows through Bosys, too. And again, we're in our second semester of that, and that's been going really well. Again, that just means it's college students. They might have one, two, or three days that they're available to come into the building, and they've been coming in and able to sub for staff that's out, that happens to be less than, or things of that nature. So I know people often in the region are talking about staff subs shortages, and it's just been a nice addition to help support our staff when they need to be out. So those are the updates and any questions?
Questions? Stephanie? You're doing some good work up there, and we really appreciate it. Mrs. Flowers keeps us posted, and we're very grateful. It's, you've got a tough assignment, and we appreciate your hard work. Thank you. Okay. Moving to the superintendent.
All right. Well, I just wanted to start with the fact that last week, we were able to allow students to have masks optional. And I think if you look on the board, you will see the smile say it all. It was so rewarding to be able to greet students and not only be able to smile at them, but then have them smile back. And, you know, we have some middle school, high school students as well in there, and like I said, it was just wonderful. Our positive cases remain low, so we're excited about that. In fact, we haven't had any all week, knock on wood, so we're hoping that that trend continues. So, Mr. Dwyer, I know this is something that's near and dear to your heart.
I heard that.
In the governor's state of the state, she proposed that by 2027, all school bus purchases must have zero emissions, and by 2035, all school buses must be electric. And Sunday, Monday, and half of the day on Tuesday, I was, it's not that upsetting for us, we're still alive. I did attend a session where they had done a case study about electric buses and to have. And, you know, there are some concerning, there are pretty significant impacts that we need to take into consideration. So you can see under that first little car, the gas or diesel buses range from 125,000 to 175,000. An electric bus ranges from 350,000 to 400,000. So you can see instantly the increase in cost that it would take to purchase electric buses. Currently, the mile range is 120 miles when it's fully charged. And when they did their study, the school district that they had studied is a 50-mile radius. So when you think about our district and some of the hills that they would need to pull in Brooklyn, that number would drop. The other piece is the charging stations that we would need to install would cost between $1 and $2 million just here at the school. And last but not least, the infrastructure concerns. There is concern that when we bring back additional buses and we hook them up to charge, that the infrastructure may not have enough energy to charge all of our buses without crashing the grid. So those are, you know, major things that we need to be considering. I was in a meeting this morning with Senator Gallivan, and we shared our concerns, because we said we know that this is in the legislature's hands, and were they aware of these many factors? You know, certainly there are positives to an electric bus as far as the emission standards. They do talk about that an electric bus will last much longer than a gas or diesel. But it's interesting, you know, we did do our transportation study this year, and we had our group. And one of the things that Jay shared is that more often than not, it's not the mileage on the buses, it's not the transmission, it's not the motor, but living in Western New York and having winter, which seems like eight out of the 12 months a year, and the salt on the roads, the chassis and the frame of the bus is compromised by the salt. So we may have an electric engine that can go 14, 15 miles, but it won't be able to, the bus that it is placed in would not be able to go that long. So there's just lots of factors to consider, and this was just really more of a presentation just to say, this is what is proposed, and we're going to need to be aware. Before I move on, do you have questions?
You nailed it. Just to follow up on a couple of points, Mrs. Flowers nailed it. Bethlehem Central outside of Albany is a district that thought they, that are heading towards a total fleet of electric buses. Now, at this point, they're getting a subsidy. The electric bus is about $200,000 more than a gasoline or diesel bus, and that subsidy's going to end. So they're having a few second thoughts about, is this the right thing to do? One other point, if indeed in 2035, the only school buses on the road are electric buses, the amount of electricity needed to run them would be the equivalent of two additional nuclear plants. So there's a lot to be looked at here, and it'll be interesting to see what happens. I think it's, electric buses have their place, but I don't think that we're set up to go 100% electric, and we'll see how it plays out.
Well, you know, I was talking to the superintendent from Wayland Cohocton, and she is the farthest school district in our Genesee Valley Bosys. She couldn't make her sports runs with 120-mile radius.
Got it.
You know, so the joke was we'd be having each other's buses at our schools charging. They'd drive their bus to the school, and then they'd have to drive one of our buses home. One of the things I didn't mention is because of that 120-mile limit, they also talked about buying additional buses, so not only having that increased cost per bus, but having an additional two or three buses added to your fleet, so that while buses are charging, you have other charged buses. But then that also would require additional drivers, because some of those routes need to be shortened just in general. So lots to think about. And then, as Gina said, this week, or next weekend, we do have our first in-person drama production, and excited to really have this opportunity for our kids to perform on stage. They'll be lucky enough to do it without masks. I'm sure every performance will be sold out. Looking forward to attending that show and seeing what our students are able to perform. And then last but not least, we do have our last conference day of the year on Friday, and we will start off with Melanie Gertley from Webster Zanni. She will be speaking to the whole staff. Much like I had presented for the admin team this year, the really diversity, equity, inclusion, and where we're starting with that is that welcoming and affirming environment for all. That's really a nice place to start when we think about how we are initially starting our steps of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and so we're looking forward to that. There will be some building time, and then again, in the afternoon, optional learning opportunities. There was a lot of feedback from the previous superintendent's conference day, where the faculty and staff really appreciated having those optional opportunities, so we are continuing with that model. And with that, any questions? Okay?
Excellent report. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And we go to community relations. I think we have a few folks that would like to address the board tonight. We'll start with our own Maggie. She's somewhere. There she is. Welcome. Sure, sure.
Hello. I'm ten, three, my little string of trumpet players or anything with me. And I'm not doing a song. For those of you that don't know me or have only seen Zoom or a performance, I'm Maggie Colzer, the elementary band director. Just one clarification, the musical is two nights. It's Friday and Saturday. There's a matinee and an evening performance, not the Sunday, just a, yeah, my favorite thing I had in my paper. And then one other thing before I do my little thing, as far as the masking pictures go, I just have to tell you that being in our line of work, singing and playing instruments, we are so grateful that our masks have become optional, because playing instruments for two years and masks has been something. So those smiles, it means, it really does mean the world to them. So anyway, I'm here this evening. Like I said, I'm Maggie Colzer. I currently teach fourth through eighth grade instrumental music and jazz. And I prepared a statement along with my department tonight as the K-12 team leader, music team leader, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of all of my department members. So I just kind of came for some clarification. I know you asked, and I can answer any questions or whatever. In the past few weeks, it's become evident that the capital project, capital improvement project currently underway will have to be scaled back and repackaged due to financial constraints. We have learned that the original proposal to upgrade our teaching spaces, our backgrounds, our backstage storage, auditorium lighting and sound systems cannot proceed as previously voted upon and accepted by our community. So as a department, we are really appreciative to Mrs. Flowers and the staff to have been included in the conversations over the past few days to delineate our top priorities for the $2.2 million of this project that are available this time. We are cognizant of the many programs and opportunities for all of our GCS students, of which this and future capital improvement projects will support. Our intent as a department remains focused on advocating for the most conducive learning, music learning and performance spaces for our students with the resources that are currently available. So with the understanding that the auditorium will be unable to receive its originally planned upgrade at this cost, and that the scope of the outlined work on our teaching spaces will have to change, the music department strongly recommends that the $2.2 million be spent redesigning and upgrading the teaching spaces that we use every day, mainly our band and chorus rooms, and to not forget the possibilities of some less expensive items in the auditorium that could be taken care of, possibly the lighting and sound components of that system, maybe looking and seeing if we can fix and go from what's really needed there. And then, just, you know, the whole situation, while our classroom upgrades, the band and chorus room may not be the showy or immediately evident to our public spaces like the auditorium, we feel that this is the best use of those funds at this time, especially since there's no guarantee that a future project will be supported. We hope it will, and I love this community. I moved my family here. We support the arts, and I can't say that, I mean, I believe that wholeheartedly, but we don't know what where we'll be in 2026. So as a department, we're willing to meet with architects and others to go back to the drawing board, to find the best possible solution to achieve the goal. So I just wanted to thank you for your time and consideration, and if there's any questions, I can answer those now or later or things like that. Thank you.
I've got more questions for them than you right now.
Okay. Well, I'm all right with that. Sorry. All right.
You know, we're very grateful that you came in.
Yes.
It's a dilemma. It's no secret.
And I understand that very much, and so does my department.
The bits came in way over what we had to spend, and I know our friends from campus are trying to fine tune things and make things work. So we appreciate you explaining what you feel are your priorities.
Yes, definitely.
And we thank you for that.
Yes.
And we're sorry we're in this position.
And we're not giving up.
And we're not giving up.
And we appreciate that. And watching the meeting from last week, I really appreciate some of the questions that have been raised and the thoughtfulness of everybody, and, like I said, the inclusion from Cindy and the meetings, squeezing meetings in the week of musical. Thank you. Can I answer anything else?
Thanks for calling.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Matt, Matt Maldon. You're on.
Hello, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board. I'd like to thank Superintendent Flowers for keeping the school community updated regarding the ongoing process of the building project being emailed. I urge the district to make sure that the community at large is made aware of the changes to the building project. A side-by-side comparison would be helpful compared to what was voted upon with what can be accomplished given the current funding, what was approved in the increase in cost of construction. The board is faced with several choices, some more difficult than others, but if I may suggest an alternate path to cuts, and that's the board's ability to go back to the public, to ask the community for additional funding, to fully fund the entire scope that the community voted on and approved. I believe that the Board of Education has the authority to put forth an additional bond proposal to account for the costs of overruns that have come to light through the fault that no one, construction costs have exponentially increased as a result of demand in that sector, as well as supply chain disruptions and various other reasons. Given the nature of current events, it's not foreseeable that the costs will ever return to the normal, and that the trend, in fact, is heading in the opposite direction, with the costs further increasing given the rising price of fuel, which will have a ripple effect. I urge the administration and the district to not repeat the patterns of previous boards of education administration's decision to delay needed improvements further down the line. It's wonderful that the administration is already thinking about another proposal in 2026, but frankly speaking, our district is well behind from a facility standpoint from most surrounding districts. I would urge the board to pass a resolution to move forward with the contract for addition of the steam instructional. And watching the meeting from last week, I really appreciate some of the questions that have been raised and the thoughtfulness of everybody, and like I said, the inclusion from Cindy and the meetings, squeezing meetings in the week of musical. Thank you. Can I answer anything else?
Thanks for calling.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Matt, Matt Maldonado. You're on.
Hello, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board. I'd like to thank Superintendent Flowers for keeping the school community updated regarding the ongoing process of the building project via email. I would urge, urge the district to make sure that the community at large is made aware of the changes to the building project. A side-by-side comparison would be helpful compared to what was voted upon with what can be accomplished given the current funding, what was approved in the increase of costs in construction. The board is faced with several choices, some more difficult than others, but if I may suggest an alternate path to cuts, and that's the board's ability to go back to the public, to ask the community for additional funding, to fully fund the entire scope of the project the community voted on and approved. I believe that the Board of Education has the authority to put forth an additional bond proposal to account for the costs of overruns that have come to light through the fault that no one, construction costs have exponentially increased as a result of demand in that sector, as well as supply chain disruptions and various other reasons. Given the nature of current events, it's not foreseeable that the costs will ever return to the normal, and that the trend, in fact, is heading in the opposite direction with the costs further increasing, given the rising price of fuel, which will have a ripple effect. I urge the administration and the district to not repeat the patterns of previous boards of education and administration's decision to delay needed improvements further down the line. It's wonderful that the administration is already thinking about another proposal in 2026, but frankly speaking, our district is well behind from a facility standpoint from most surrounding districts. I would urge the board to pass a resolution to move forward with the contract for addition of the steam instructional space and the enlargement of the small gymnasium. As that project's the main driver that obtains state aid, it would be wise to do so. If the district opts to, to route to make cuts instead of paying for more funding, based upon my understanding of the presentation from 3-2, the optics look rather bad for the majority of the fine arts projects being delayed. I would urge the Board of Education to consider improvements to academics places within the building and building improvements before making improvements to the grounds. I feel it may mistake to not continue with planned improvements to fine arts spaces with the thought that maybe the next proposal could be done. I again appeal to the board to go to the public to ask for our needed additional funding. If the board is considering pausing any portion of the project, I would urge the board to pause the site work regarding replacing the grass surfaces to turf for several reasons. The installation of turf will forever lock the district into a never-ending loop of capital group or projects related to the need to replace the surface every 10 to 15 years. One can look to the right New York School District for the dire consequences this could impose on educational intersplastic program. That district was on the verge of having to close all the turf surfaces for further use at the end of the 2019-2020 school year if the turf was not replaced, as opposed to safety risk and was beyond its spend of life. Natural grass and turf surfaces, both at annual costs, associated with them for the purpose of upkeep and maintenance, however, using natural grass is cheaper in the short and long run, and I understand that drainage is an issue, so maybe that could be looked at instead of just upgrading to turf. More importantly, however, is the issue of safety for students and student athletes. According to injury data from the National Football League collected between 2012 and 2018, athletes are at a 69% greater risk for non-contact foot and ankle injuries to apply it on turf surfaces. This staggering statistic should get the board paused when considering the safety of students and student athletes. With pushing professional sports away from turf surfaces back to natural grass, I would urge the district to reconsider this, as we've been afforded the opportunity given the cost of this. As the district has placed a focus on STEAM and not simply STEM, the two acronyms are not interchangeable, as the A in STEAM stands for the arts. While not intentional, the dangers that, given the appearance of precedent, is that the arts are a little less. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you very much. Well, well thought of. Thank you. David Levy. There he is.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for giving our time to address you all. I don't have a fully prepared statement. I'm not as smart as Matt. I'll speak off the cuff, as they are. All right, so I was heartened by the fact that I was able to participate in meetings by seeing the recordings of the last two meetings of the, of the school board. It was very helpful as a community member to learn from that medium that these discussions were going on. I have some issues with the fact, as previous community members have already said, that the community has not been as sort of aggressively or proactively been brought into this conversation. Had to kind of find my way to the fact that these discussions were going on, all right? So again, to the question, to the issue of optics that Matt spoke to, involving community, kind of being more transparent with this stuff, I think would go a long way. One thing I'm still kind of unclear about is why it is that the external vendors seem to be driving the decision concerning what the priorities are. As I witnessed or saw the presentations and recording last week, the sense I got from it is that they're driving the decision that the field is the first priority and the gym and steam space are the second priority. Maybe that's reversed. Maybe the steam space is in fact the first priority because of the linkage to state aid. They did all the work already on that stuff, and they pumped it, doing the work on the cost reductions with respect to the fine art stuff. It was really heartened, Mike, by your willingness to raise that question specifically. It's really heartened Chris and Craig were here, Julie as well, right? Sort of your, your willingness to sort of step up, go to that in that context and ask the hard questions about why this is the approach that's being taken. What's the timeframe for giving the community, giving you all additional information to help you make a better informed decision about whether to approve what's before you now or not? What I wasn't heartened by was the responses you got, namely, well, look, we got to get this stuff done now, right? We've got to bust balls down on the gym over the summer, as if that's got to be this summer as opposed to next summer. Not suggesting that all of this stuff ought to be put on pause indefinitely, but I don't think that you're in a position right now to make a well-informed decision, completely informed decision, about whether to proceed with the information, on the basis of the information that you have. So all I ask is that you not pass the resolution tonight, right? And, and wait for the, the additional information about where there might be cost reductions in the plans for the improvements to the arts areas. And through that, also have more conversations internal to you all about whether you think the priorities being presented to you by others are what the priority should be. Should the field come before the improvements to the arts spaces? Should the educational value, as Superintendent Flowers mentioned last week, of having a turf field, does that trump the educational value of having superior arts spaces for Mrs. Cullser, for Miss Howard, for all of our art students? Superior spaces for community members who come in to the building for concerts or productions, so on and so forth? So I just ask for your commitment to being duly diligent and understand that the community will appreciate and, and kind of have the patience as you write out that process. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Max Yukowski?
Yarowski.
I'm sorry. Apologize. Welcome.
You're not the first.
There you go.
Thank you also for letting me speak, and I'd like to endorse what Ms. Cullser said. And I have such respect for you, the positive attitude that you show here is certainly present to me, deal with the kids and how you're managed to wrangle music out of a large room full of these small people. It's a testament to hope and forward thinking. Thank you very much. I endorse generally what, what you said, Matt, just as a set of reasonable ideas which are worthy of consideration. It makes sense to me that before laying down our markers to continue what the vendor is recommending, it would be reasonable to say why that is not possible. What that is suggesting is not possible. And I also appreciate what you said about gathering information and rushing it along. My, my son, as Superintendent Flowers knows, plays two sports, the same two sports. I'm glad he does it. It enriches his life. I hope that he can do that throughout his GCS career, and I'm glad that you all are investing in facilities that are going to make that more rewarding for him, more work for his peer group. It's important to him, but it's also part of a well-rounded education. It's not the, the end, it's not the alpha and omega, it's not the sole thing. Back when we were selecting a new superintendent, which resulted, this is, I was coming here, there was talk of how this could be an opportunity for GCS to broaden its, to broaden its scope, to broaden its host from being maybe the best school in some ways in Livingston County to, why can't we be as good as any school in Monroe County? Why are we comparing ourselves to our local group? Or we compare ourselves to Brighton or Pittsburgh? And I would ask you to consider before you make this decision whether this alignment of resources that you're considering goes towards, supports that goal of taking us to the next level with a different peer group, with a, with a different peer group. We recall the, the recent difficult decisions to cut the strings program, and some of these same thoughts came up again, like what are our priorities? Priorities, arts, sports, and we find a way to balance the two, and there just wasn't a way at that time to, to balance the two. I, I voted for the last levy because it was presented as a balanced support for a broader array of interests that are going to be important to my son and to every student here. And it seems to me that if the final product is going to be substantially different from what was presented at the time of the levy, it would make sense to me to re-present the levy to the people of Genesee. Not, I mean, I, I think there would be practical difficulties to that perhaps, but at least gets people involved, allows people to, to vote on what is actually being done, you know, rather than what is being imposed by a vendor actually has nothing to do with the scores. I appreciate your time. I appreciate that this never gets any easier for you individually and as a board. Thank you, Felicity.
Thanks, Mel. Appreciate you coming in. Last but not least, we have our president emeritus, Mrs. Mallonbacker. Welcome.
Love it. I'm not going to take much time. I was here two meetings ago to say what I'm probably going to say again and support everybody who's spoken already. I have the unique experience of being on that side of the tables and on this side now as just a community member who cares deeply about this community, the children, and this building. I sat there with all of you and made some of these decisions. We picked who we thought was going to be the right leaders for our building project, and things beyond our control, and also some things perhaps in their control did not go as planned. And I would just say that if I was still sitting on that side, I would be very upset and angry that some things weren't done that should have been done or were expected to be done in a way that they were not. And I would also say that I agree with everything that's been said here, that I think we have a community that would support taking a pause, saying that we need to balance each of these three sections that we all decided were important. We met, we took the time to meet with all the stakeholders, with teachers, with parents, with community members, what was important to them in sports, in fine arts, in STEAM, and we made a really good decision in my book. I would hate to see us rushed and make, you know, a decision that might put us back and have to fix things later that we don't need to fix later if we just do it right from the get-go. We have fixed that parking lot how many times because we didn't take a break to make sure that what we were doing in the first place was really what we should have been doing. So I would just really hope that everybody here that I respect and worked with and went through this with will really think long and hard about trusting our community, that they knew what they wanted, they knew what they voted for, and that if we have to go back out and say, we just can't do this right now, this is not going to work, and we want to give the people what they voted for, give them a chance to be brought in to say, no, we're fine with kind of mixing it up, doing $2 million here and this there, and in 2026 we'll do something else, or no, we're willing to throw that extra few million, $5 million, whatever it is, to do it right now, and we are behind. We are behind in this building of all kinds of schools around us. Let's, let's be fair. Our kids should all get what they deserve, each group, and so I would just really hope that all of you will take everything that everyone has said into account, everything we've talked about in the past, because on that side, and, and be thoughtful in your ultimate decision. But in the end, I do trust all of you, as you know, so, and it isn't easy, as I will know, so I wish you luck in that.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you. Thanks, Jen, very much. Okay, I think that's it for community relations. And why don't we move along to committee reports? Audit finance?
Well, we were going to meet tonight, but we didn't. So we're going to postpone that until, we'll try it for the 22nd. Yeah, Craig's out of town, and Julie and I were at a hockey banquet, so we chose to reschedule.
That's fine. We were scheduled for policy that night, but budget's important, so.
There's more.
Maybe we could both meet that night.
I think there's more.
Yeah. Yeah. Except that Ken and Cindy like to sit in and, we'll work it out. We'll work it out. That's fine. Policy, we did not meet, but we've got a couple of boilerplate policies that we're going to vote on in a little while.
The second read of the purchasing.
Second read of the purchasing. Thank you. And maybe that's it? So, to be continued. So GCEF, Cindy and I were both on the Zoom meeting of that wonderful group the other day, and they're always looking for ways to help kids and, and faculty, field trips, that type of thing, and they're, they're just a blessing, that group, and they've got a, a couple of things in the hopper, and I just can't say enough for that group. Mrs. Flowers, you want to add?
Just, you know, really want to reiterate what, what David said. We're blessed to have that group in our, in our district. They, on a regular basis, are saying, how can we support, as David said, everyone, the students, the faculty, the families, anybody that we can? How do we, how do we help? And it's just wonderful to have a group of people who are so dedicated and quite successful at raising money. So it's, we're, we're very lucky, and I'm fortunate to be part of a district that has that support.
Great. Thank you. So we'll go right, right to personnel?
Under personnel, I'd like to entertain a consent motion for items 8.02 through 8.13. Second.
Questions on any of those items? Comments? Going once, going twice? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No? Pass unanimous? Thank you. Item 8.02?
No.
No?
No, we're on nine now. So we're going to, we're going to have a discussion.
Oh, that was all part of that. I apologize.
You're talking about 10.02.
Now we're going to the discussion on the capital project, right?
Which relates to item 10.02.
Gotcha. Okay, so here we are. We've heard a lot of excellent comments tonight, thoughtful comments. One of the action items tonight is to approve or not approve the low bid for the turf field and the rear parking area, and the low bid came in significantly over what was projected to cost. So we've got that, and then we've got, we talked extensively about cost engineering of the addition last time, and what information we didn't have the last time was cost engineering on the auditorium. That, that's why we asked the, the good folks from campus to, to come. Any updates on the, on that item, on the costing value, costing for the auditorium and related projects?
Sure. So since the last board meeting, we have met with the fine art staff and the district administration on two separate occasions to identify what we have available, what we believe is available in the project for this piece, as well as to identify what their priorities are. We met yesterday with our, with the design team. We got the theatrical consultant Peter Chu was actively involved in all of the design on the phones. Broke down a lot of the, the ideas of why things are designed the way they are and what the reasoning behind it was, and we have since scheduled an additional meeting for next Thursday. They're coming back in person so we can actually walk out in the auditorium and take a much closer look at the lights, the sound system, and everything that is, that accompanies that, so we can come up with a, a less expensive option rather than what was originally designed. We've also met and looked at the constructional space, again, per the direction of the staff, and we have identified a few areas where we believe there is some cost savings, some is the window replacement. Right now, I was calling for a one-to-one window replacement. If we choose not to do that at this time, there's a potential for $25,000 savings there. And then there was also, in the current design, the entire HVAC system was being totally replaced. There was new rooftop units being done, so we could go in and just kind of clean that up a little bit, and there's potential savings there for another $125,000. So at this time, the, the project and design team have been rigorously looking at this, evaluating this, talking about this, going. this, talking about this, going through everything we can. And we have identified some areas. We're just kind of working our way through that process. But it's not, it's not getting swept away or put on the back burner at all. It is a priority to the team.
Okay. But you don't have numbers for us tonight?
Just a couple of brief numbers. At this time, we've identified areas. Until we can meet with these, with the theatrical consultant, with the AV specialist, the people that really design these systems and know the ins and outs, once we meet with them, we can get a more accurate cost associated with what the new systems could potentially look like.
So the list...
Questions?
The list that you all came up with, it's prioritized? You know, there were 1, 2, 3? Is that the priority?
No, actually.
The list I saw, you know, they were numbered, and I just wanted...
Right. No, actually, when I met with the music department, they reprioritized. And that's why, as Maggie said, really, first and foremost, their instructional spaces are their number one priority. Number two would be storage. Well, number two and three are pretty close. Additional storage and updating the AV and the lights in the auditorium are pretty close to two and three. Would you agree with that, Maggie?
Yes. Yeah. That was from our email conversation?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, so you've gone through it. You prioritize it. You have the list?
Yes, they were part of that meeting.
So Gary, last meeting on the second, you said it was going to take six weeks. And my conversations with everybody here was, "What can we, what can you turn around in much shorter time?"
Right.
And I'm not willing to wait for six weeks.
I understand. So we've heard that message. And as we said, so we met with this AV consultant that works for SCI Design. So we had a quite lengthy conversation with them, gave them where we were, let them understand where we were financially, and recognized and shared with them. They knew that that AV lighting, sound system all came in around a million, and that it was another million for the steel and infrastructure, and said, "We don't, we don't have that kind of money. We just don't. It's just not there." So what can we do and still deliver a better product to the district? So his availability was next Thursday. So he is coming here. We're all meeting with him that day to look at this again and say, "What can we do?" Here's where we are.
So I, good, thank you. And first off, I want to compliment everybody who has worked so hard to kind of understand the needs. And I think that's essential. Thank you for some of the work that you've done in the last few weeks. Appreciate that. We really need this component. I'm not comfortable proceeding until we have all the components of this project that we committed to the community. Let me put that out front. To that end, I would never be opposing, some of you brought it up here, of asking the community for something else, if and only that we have done diligence on every aspect of this project and looked at the cost comparisons, the cost elements. I'm not willing to compromise, so I think we need to keep that in mind. And by compromise, take out things that are really, really needed. Whenever we put those needs analysis together, it's important to understand what's really needed and what's nice to have. At the same time, I'm not making that decision because I'm not in the arts or in the athletics or any other areas. So I need everybody here to tell us what is really essential. And then, then, and I think only then, can you do your job. And we need that sharpened pencil really soon. That's where I'm at. I'm not willing at this point to proceed until we have all the components. I've spent a fair amount of time talking to all of you about that. You made a commitment to the community, and I'm not going to look them in the face and tell them that we're going to back off this year.
And certainly, no one wants to be in this position. And actually, when we first received the news of the bids, the initial look at the repackaging of the district was the auditorium and the turf field, because we didn't think that we would be able to afford that STEAM and gym addition. But then looking further into those one-time STEAM building aid units from the state really made it concerning that we may lose out on that opportunity to have that STEAM space for our students. So that's when we actually switched that focus back to trying to see if we could value engineer, take savings from that addition, and still offer that, that part of the project to our community. And as we've looked at the value engineering aspects, what becomes very difficult is the complicated structure that the auditorium is. And renovating that is very expensive because of some of those limitations. There has to be an expansive steel beam brought into that space without moving an exterior wall, without removing a ceiling. And that is extremely challenging. And it's because of the roundness of that stage, which is one of the reasons that you actually struggle with that, with that space. And so moving forward to look at other pieces much beyond that instructional space and improving lighting and audiovisual are going to be very difficult. It's almost more cost-effective to wait and completely renovate that space in the future to really allow people to design it the way we need it to function. You know, one of the comments that Maggie had said to me, and I think it was our first meeting, is, "I want to be able, when we get done with this renovation, for the community to come in and to see what we've done." And I thought about that, because 90% of the work was going to happen behind the scenes. It was going to be the storage, the scene shop. Really, there was going to be minimal stuff done to the stage. Certainly, there was a pretty extensive audiovisual package that was included. But I was like, that's a pretty telling statement to me, because when we look at that, what our community say? What did you spend 5 million on? And it really is the complexity and the cost of that steel. I mean, the steel has increased. I don't know, Gary, how much has the steel increased in cost?
In the past year, it's gone up over 50%.
So, and so, and I want to clarify, the vendor hasn't been driving the decisions. We really have been meeting with our entire team, our fiscal advisors, really trying to protect the taxpayers' responsibility and what their taxes are going to be year to year. Matt, have we discussed, you know, the possibility of going out and potentially asking for more money? We have. We're concerned it would be a significant ask of the community. And that has led us to proceed in the direction that we are right now.
I'm sorry. You got to give us numbers. And I agree with everything you said. I understand the technical, the raw material challenges, the labor challenges. Believe me, I understand. But I really have to come back to you and say, "If you turn it around quicker, maybe we can move something."
We're definitely trying. But we kind of have to know some things, too. And that is, we have had this conversation with this expert, and he's been told where we are financially, and is there something else that we can do? And these meetings with the staff and the group to understand what their priorities are.
So have that meeting next Thursday, and then we revisit.
And so to clarify, the only actionable item tonight is moving forward with the site contract. And is, are you, am I hearing from you, you're not willing to move forward on any of the project at all at this point?
I think we need to just give them a couple of weeks. 22nd is our next meeting. I believe, I want it as much as anybody else. But I just feel confident, don't feel confident, that we have enough information. Even the costs through the value engineering, even that, I'm totally not confident with, that those are accurate. Given, given all the things that are taking place in terms of getting trades and labor and everybody else around here, raw materials, one thing. But when do we even have the availability of electricians? When do we have the availability of any of the other trades?
It's a real challenge.
Quite a while. I know it is.
It's a huge challenge.
And the cost of some of those bids is outrageous right now.
So part of it, or, sorry.
You know what the costs are for the projects taking place right now.
So what we ran up against is that there, I think we shared this, the electrical union has about 635 members on the bench. There aren't many. This coming solar project up on the hill is going to take 300 alone in a greater roster area. Then you have a university roster, Marketplace.
Yeah.
And then you have Amazon. And that's about it.
I know.
So what we, and part of what we're trying to share with the board and the community is that allowing us to start with the demolition this summer, but only on the electrical part of it, we'd only need one or two electricians just to do the demo and disconnect so that they could safely take the building apart. And that was appealing to the contractors, knowing that they didn't have the staff at the summer, people they don't have, and that they would then be able to start in September with the actual construction. And sharing with you that our fear is, and I'm just laying all my cards on the table, and I, and I'm 100, I am, I'm 100% with you, as far as having the facts, having the information, understanding what the priorities of the district are, and what those costs are for the auditorium, is going to make up, it's going to be able to put you and the community in a better position to better understand what those decisions have to be. And they're not easy decisions, none of them. And we only have so much money to work with. And part of our fear is that, and we're all living it right now as we put gas in our cars, it's worse today than it was two weeks ago. And that's going to be reflected in pricing two weeks from now, and three weeks from now, four weeks from now.
That's why I don't have confidence in what we've already got.
Yeah, on top of. If it's not a couple percent in a month, it could be 10, 15, 20% from where we were. And that's a major worry on our part as to what is, how it's eroding at the budget as we sit here. And as far as a start, a capable start, I spoke with Mark Sorrento from Field Turf on Monday, and he shared with me, he said, "We're pretty much full for turf this summer. If you don't get your order placed in the next two or three weeks, I doubt we will get it done this year, this summer." So we're just running, it's like you run into a wall, run into a wall, run into a wall. And it's, can I do this? And the contractors, they're just, they're just overwhelmed. They just have so much going on, and they're facing pricing challenges every single day. It's, it's not a great storm to be in right now for anyways. It's tough. Real tough.
Go ahead.
Could we seem to put special meetings in often? Could we put, like, once we get these costs after the meeting next Thursday, could we maybe have a special meeting to talk about it?
Well, our next board meeting is the 22nd, that following Tuesday.
Oh, okay. So we'd have it by then?
We'll have it by then.
Does that, does that impact if we wait till that one? Does that impact the turf and the ordering and the timeline?
So we have to look at, so the bid that was submitted on February 2nd?
Oh, yes.
As a shelf life, that's true. Okay, so I believe it's 45 days.
45 days by law.
By law. So...
What's your make-up want, you know?
Between a rock and a hard place. I think we have seven days left on that. By law, so when a contractor bids work, you can hold them to that bid for 45 days. After that, they can, they can say, "No, thank you."
So we're within about seven days of that, more or less?
I think so.
Okay.
It was February 2nd, sitting here in demand. And that's not to say that the contractor is going to...
Got you.
But they have the option. Whereas if they pulled out beforehand, we have their bid bond. We don't answer that. So between that and really getting the carpet ordered in order to have it completed by the fall, those are the two gambles, I guess, pledged.
Well, I think if we, and I'm just letting people know the fact, if we don't accept that site contract tonight, that field won't be done by fall. I mean, we were, we were pressed, if we accepted it tonight, that we were hoping minimally it would be done by fall.
Not to mention we lose the bid, because it would be beyond 45 days.
And one of the things, when you do have, you know, this bid process in a school, you have to take the lowest bidder. We were fortunate, the lowest bidder for this project is a respectable, good contractor.
I got a couple of thoughts. One, the perception, I think, Cindy, you did a nice job of helping to guide them, giving us numbers. So it wasn't them leading us. It was definitely you giving advice to them as far as who's to look at. So that's one. Two, so happy to hear Maggie, you talk about the instructional space. Years ago, I was talking about, you know, what needs do the teachers have in the buildings? What do they need? And for you to come back with that is number one. Just, it says a lot. And then to go back to community, again, just in two weeks, the stability of the cost, we can't predict that. We could say we need 3 million or 5 million, and it could be 8. In the last couple of weeks, the amount of people have come to me who have, you know, brought their concerns about the gym and not having a field house, and it's the same sort of concern. And if you look at what the lecture field house is that people keep referring to, that talk to me, you know, to build that today is, yeah, with the steel and the windows, it's just, you can't even comprehend the difference of what that was in 30 years ago. So I think there's a lot of concerns to just to think about, so.
Other comments from the board?
So if we don't approve the turf field tonight, we have, when we come back 22nd, there's still a seven-day window?
I said seven, so I got to do the math.
Is it, is it, um, business days?
So February 2nd was...
Is it business days or 45 days?
45 calendar days.
Calendar day? I just counted it.
So we're at 10 days.
We're at 36 now.
From today. Okay.
And nine days.
No, you don't have to add it. Okay.
David, would you entertain me having your comment?
Oh, sure.
Okay. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Allison Chandler. I'm a teacher in this district, and I have children in this district. And I thought a lot about this, because my kids are involved in pretty much every aspect of everything at this school. And they love everything at this school. And I see all sides of this. And I think it's really heart-wrenching to have to be faced with this. One thing I feel like is, in the times that we are right now, the idea of waiting and going back out is really a dangerous thought. I, I'm going to put this out there, because I'm like a right-up-there person. I'm not sure that if you went out and said, "Okay, we made this bid, and we were really wrong, but now trust us that this is right, that our community is going to come to us with that." What I do trust is, right now, these people are working really hard to get us the best thing that we can have. And I also trust the fact that the district has met with our fine arts people that are in-house, and they've shown some places that aren't going to totally redo the auditorium the way we want to, but can have a huge impact on the way we teach fine arts at this school. And I believe, working with our engineers and architects, we can find a way to do that within the parameters of that $2.2 million that's left over. And I hope that there would be a commitment to say that that's where that money will go. Two, some maybe auditorium revisions that we can do without breaking down walls, and two, our classroom spaces. And I feel like it would be devastating for our community, for our kids. I mean, you don't know the number of kids who have said to me, "Are we getting, you know, an auditorium, are we getting this, are we getting that?" For them to get nothing right now. And I feel like to throw away the chance of having two-thirds of this done well, and one-third of it done to the best we can right now with the promise of going out in a few more years to try and fix the rest of it, we've got to take what we can get right now. I really honestly feel that way. And I'm not discarding what anyone says. I agree with absolutely everything, but I think you're not going to make everyone happy. And I hate the idea of pulling something off the table right now with the hopes that we can try and get more money in a place where people are desperate. I just went to the gas tank today, and it was 20 cents more than two days ago. So I feel like asking for more money now is going to be really tough. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Those are great comments, too. Let me just ask one general question. To that, kind of to that point, what happens if we go up, if we approve this, what we, the two-thirds so far, and the $10 million-ish comes in at 11?
So tonight, we're, tonight, we're approving this site.
What happens to the $2.2 million?
So, so tonight, we're approving the site, which is the $2.3 million. As far as the STEAM and the gym, which is 7.7 million with the value engineering, that's another bid process. So that's another conversation about, are you comfortable with having them then move forward with that bid process? If that bid comes in higher than what they have packaged, once again, we have the conversation, do we reject? Do we accept? Do we stop? Do we pause and look at repackaging everything between the STEAM and gym and the auditorium?
Yeah, I guess that would be my short answer to that question, would be, is if we rebid the gym addition, and, you know, six, eight weeks from now, whatever that day might be, that with the state, the status of the economy right now, with everything that's happening, and this price gets escalated, there's, there's nothing saying that it has to be approved or accepted at that point. You know, that's, that's a guaranteed number once that bid comes in? If that, I don't know if that answers... But if it comes, but if it comes in at a manageable number, then we have, then we have a hard number to invest in the auditorium. Now we, now we know how much we have that we can actually use.
Julie, you got a comment?
Well, I feel like we're now in this open forum and exchange. So my question is to the music department.
So my question is to the music department or the fine arts department. Like Maggie, I really appreciate what you said about how you went back through and looked and created your priorities. But, you know, I came into this worried about if this was gonna be enough. So my question to everyone within that group is, is it enough with what you've come back with? And, because my thought was to pause, but it sounds like pausing may be detrimental to the entire project. So I'm wondering if.
I, I'd just like to.
I don't know if I can ask that, but it's.
Just reiterate, it needs to be reiterated, that what Mrs. Flowers said, the vendors aren't driving this. What's driving this is the bids came in $5 million over than what we had to spend. That's what's driving. The board has spent a lot of time on this, but a fraction of what Mrs. Flowers and Mr. Forrester have spent on this. If I had a dollar for every hour they've spent on this, I could retire again. And, and I, I think Mike's point is, is, is well taken. Maybe we just have to wait and see about that auditorium piece. And maybe we have to put aside for tonight the turf field and realizing that maybe it won't be done by the fall. I'm just not sure, go ahead.
My thoughts are only, only until the 22nd of the turf field. And I only say that because, what is, how many days do we have?
I'd say here, I think it's about thirty-five days, we're into the forty-five.
So it's ten, it's ten days from tonight, is that before the 22nd? So that's March 16th, if I can do math. Today, the 6th?
It's twenty days.
Twenty, so we have to the 19th. We were gonna meet on the 6th. So, you know, I just.
Can I answer this question?
Yeah, you should be able to answer the question.
Is it enough? I think, of course, we want the auditorium to be spectacular and fit our needs for, for the drama, for everything that we do. But since we were given these parameters, we went back to our list, right? And so we're making work the two-point, whatever money we have. And I think all I can speak to on that is, is it ever enough? We want, we came in the first time with what we wanted because we want that and we need that for our space. But if the $2.2 million means raising the floors for us in the band room, taking out the carpets, just looking at my elementary band, I would be able to put my fourth and fifth grade in there at that point using, if, if that's what the $2.2 million means. If it means raising the floors, if it means creating some of the storage spaces that we need to get our marching band profession out of our teaching space, then I, I would say snapshot right now, that would, that would be enough for now, with the hope that in the future we can. As, as far as like, I mean, the tiers may not mean a lot to people, but for us, having that flat floor means we can put a jazz ensemble face to face, means we can put our coral ensembles in a different way. Means the creative teaching, things that we have. I don't know if that really answers the question?
No, it does, it does.
Well, and you just talked today briefly about the flexibility that will give you, even just changing the direction you teach and having more room because of that wall, that, when you take those stores.
We are in a space, yeah.
Yes, not, right, not what you need, not what you need and not what we'd actually hope for.
If, if we were to grant the, the bid tonight for the turf field, it's $2.386 million. We know what that number is. That leaves us, you can correct me, 9.8 million and change to spend. No, go ahead.
There's also value engineering in that 2.386 that they're gonna put towards, correct?
So they're putting it out at the full amount, but that doesn't factor in the 238,000?
So I just, you know, that leaves us maybe 9.8 million to spend. Now, the guesstimate is, the gym addition is 7.7 million, that's the guesstimate. We haven't gone out yet. It could come in in ten. We're thinking in terms of, okay, it will, the bids will come in at 7.7, which would give us about 2 million more to spend. You know, that might not happen.
You're right. And it, and it's also important to keep in mind that that 7.7 number for the gym, that's a breakdown from the bids that we got on February 2nd. So those are actual bid numbers, not an estimated number by any estimating department.
Right.
Or our own estimating department.
If that number, we do go out to that number, that number comes back higher than we're comfortable with, last meeting you said, we have 10 years, correct?
Correct.
For that money to be spent.
Right.
Yes, so if we were to repackage the, the gym and the steam addition and rebid it and it were to come over, come back significantly over what we had estimated, you have the ability to reject or accept that bid. And we, at that point, we can stop, pause and regroup.
I think you did a very nice job with the value engineering. I think consider, continue to keep looking at that with, you know, the functionality versus say, you know, what the appearance is or the overall look compared to, you know, cost effectiveness and functionality for our stat and the test for our kids is really what you need to think about. To try to keep that number as low as we possibly can.
The only, the only other thing I'm gonna, I wanna add about the, I'm gonna call it a delay to going out to bid for the gym addition is long lead items, okay? Structural steel components and the actual construction schedule. It's, it's already really borderline as to being complete, to be usable space by, I believe our schedule right now has it next November, to actually have the gym usable. If this pushes out another six to eight weeks additional, then that construction schedule looks much different. And there could be significant impacts throughout two academic school years in those spaces versus just one. Kind of that helps, but.
Okay.
Couldn't we, um.
Go ahead.
Add a meeting in before the 22nd? That's after the meeting next Thursday and within the 10 days that we still have left on the bid?
So.
To get more information.
So the, the meeting's on the 17th. That would meet a board meeting on the 18th.
Meeting on the 22nd?
Yeah, I mean.
And you're away.
They might not have the, you won't have, you won't have what we are looking for at that point. You'll have, you'll have a good sense of what the architect becomes in a look at the space provided, but.
We may have an ident, a scope potentially identified.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna have the basic, your walkthrough next week will give you a good sense of what the priorities are. How long from there? And I mean, close the door, shove pizzas under the door.
We're gonna have to work the weekend.
Pardon?
We're gonna have to work the weekend to do that.
But I mean, from the standpoint of how long can you turn around some of, how long would it take you to turn around numbers to us?
That's what I'm saying, we'll have to.
Just a weekend? So, so we're at the 22nd?
That 22nd board meeting, we should be able to have.
So that, and the 22nd, let me just clarify here, we'll have, whatever the walkthrough reveals in terms of priorities, the numbers, fully value engineering. That, that a fair statement? Plus, we'll have the second, which we already have.
My other half isn't here, SEI, I can't speak for them, I don't know. But yes, we'll do whatever we can to possibly deliver you that, yes, we're committed to it.
What do you think it would take timeframe for bids to come back for the gym scene if we send it back out?
We need two weeks minimum for the design for SEI and the consultants to make sure that all the bid documents are accurate. And then we need three weeks for the bid win. So it's a five-week, tentatively a, a five-week process once we're told, okay, go.
Thank you.
One other thought I just had, would it be appropriate, would it be proper for you folks to reach out to the low bidder on the turf field and say, would you hold your bid to the 22nd? And you'll get an answer on the 22nd?
For sure.
Which is two days over than.
They would call them, I mean.
That would be helpful.
As soon as we are done here.
That would be helpful, okay.
But just to be clear, LG Evans may hold that, that bid number.
Right.
But by going to the 22nd, it is unlikely that turf field will be in place this fall.
I'm gonna say it's in jeopardy.
Yeah, I'm not willing to give up.
I'm just gonna say it's in jeopardy, and I'm just basing that on Mercer's conversation I had with him on Monday. We don't disclose it quick.
But it's overtime to get it in the fall, I don't think we're anywhere near that.
They may not, they may hold that bid price after the 45 days, but we also run the jeopardy that they could not give us that price.
Correct.
After that 45 days either.
Correct.
Right? Because legally, they're bound to it, and after that, they could readjust the figure and say, we can't do this for this anymore.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is all correct.
But you'll have some sense of that when you come along. They, they might say it's out of the question, okay, it's out of the question.
If they say no, then we can have a special meeting next week, then I'll call it.
Okay.
Is that okay? And the 19th is the last.
And it would make them, it would not make them a bad person to say, no, I can't hold it after that. They're, they're allowed to do that now, it doesn't make them a bad. Things, things have even changed in two weeks now.
And the 19th is the last day of the 45 days, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Does our administration wanna add in anything, any thoughts you guys were thinking? I can retract my question.
You're very wise.
I think we're talking to him.
I mean, from my perspective, you know, I mean, I think you know how I stand. I feel like the, the turf is very important to our, not only athletes, but our students overall. I think we suffer, we don't have enough education, we need to be able to use that nonstop. Drainage is an issue, we only play mercy sports on that, we only play JV sports on that, we only play pop light sports on that, we don't play youth sports on that. It will keep used, it gets used about 20 times a year, that's it. And giving up on that and continuing with that, I don't think it's a test for our student athletes, our community, coaches. I, I do think the $2.3 million is worth it. And to go ahead and go with that right now and then repack and then see where we're at. And, you know, it might be that the gym and the steam doesn't happen and you do the work to the auditorium and you get a turf field and auditorium, you don't get into the gym. To me, I feel like I can live in the gym. And I know community people may feel differently, and they're really good at the gym and they get annoyed with it, how it is. And if we need to do that for another three or four years and we have to go out and redo that five years from now and the auditorium gets to work, then that's what we do. But I just feel like keep pushing it off, because pushing it off, I, 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 you know, if we push off another two weeks and they can't get it in the fall and we start doing the work on it, whatever, I mean, I'll fall.
Because the other factor that comes into that when we look at our scheduling is, if we were to move forward with the steam and gym addition, we're losing that entire small gym area for a year. So that means our elementary, middle school, high school have the pool, the mezzanine and the big gym. And if you ask any PE teacher right now, they are all fighting for instructional space. If we have the turf field, that is a teaching space first and foremost, that's an instructional space. If it's not in place in the fall and the winter, we, we don't have that, that availability to us.
So that's, that's another good point. Did, I think you raised this, Cindy, at one point. Can band or us ever use that field during class, four classes? It was mentioned, I don't know, what's your thoughts?
I mean, marching band, what, what, before COVID, marching band used the large gym every morning to, to practice. Could they use the turf field? Absolutely. Or the parking lot, or the, or the front of the bus loop. So yeah, I mean, a, a hard surface that's dry, they would absolutely be able to use that.
My only comment would be, there are many, many years to, just do it right. Whatever we do, let's do it right. Now, it'd be right ahead of you.
Well, if we do the turf field tonight, it'll be in business this fall, if you wanna do that.
Not sure I've had a worse difficult decision in all my 20 years in public office.
Kathy? What do you think about turf fields?
I support better field, okay.
Well, I mean, everybody knows I'm a, a sport person. But when I listen to the meeting that I missed, or the things that they were taking out because, you know, the engineer said this and that, this and that, this one engineer. Has anybody talked to, like, Calum, who else has, see, what, what's the upkeep of that? If, if we cut back on that extra stuff that goes underneath the turf, what is the outcome of how long it's gonna last if we don't do it right? So the engineer says, oh, we can get away with this, this and this. But is that the right way to do it? Or is that just, we wanna get it done, we gotta get it under budget, this is what we have to cut?
There were about 14 value engineering recommendations that we, we actually went through and didn't do because it would compromise either the safety of the field or the drainage. So the only value engineering recommendations we accepted did not compromise any of that.
Kathy, I think what you're referring to in.
The base stuff.
The changes were, under the base, were the result of the soil samples that you took from the field. Would you go down seven feet, I think I said?
Correct.
So you, you took that from the field, so that revealed that it wasn't as bad as originally thought. So I think that's what you're referring to.
So the engineer was able to amend their original design based on Mike's recommendation that we go look at that field and bore into it. So we brought an excavator out, we dug four deep holes to see what was in there. And to the engineer's opinion, it was, they could change the stone design for that, the subbase layer. And also, that original design, there was pushback from FieldTurf, who is the vendor for the turf, as to whether that design would actually perform. This is, this design that has been adopted is the one that FieldTurf wants for the warranty, for the, for the longevity of that field. It's the right thing to do based on the manufacturer's input.
You said 12 years, was that correct for the warranty?
So, yes, so the way this rolls is New York State only aids turf fields over 15 years. And the warranty is 12, and by the manufacturer. So at year 13, you can replace it, but it's just appropriated by the state on the, for that. Fields run, it, it depends. So fields run 12 to 15 years longevity, and it depends on how much you use them. There's some districts out there use them seven days a week, 15 hours a day. We're getting 10 years on them because they're just hammering it. You know, they're getting 10, 12 years because they're just, but they're using them. I mean, that's not a bad thing because that's what the community wants. The community supported a turf field and the school and the community are using that. And they're getting their money, they are getting their money's worth out of them because they're using them. 10, 12 months out of the year, they really are, it's, it's, you can't go on those, these grass fields right now. You'd be lucky to get on, to get on them in May right now. A turf field, you're on it now. And that's why they, that's why the districts like them so much. As Cindy said, it's another teaching station you didn't have, really.
So you're either making recommendations to vote on it tonight, or option B is you're gonna reach out to them, see if they hold it past that date.
Yeah.
However, there's no guarantees on either side of that. Hold it or get it done by certain date.
It has, you have to approve yes or no tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'm saying that to, that, that number, we, we can't predict, but we can assume that's gonna, it's gonna go on.
For what?
If they rebid it after 45 days.
You're talking about the field?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, probably will, yeah. But we know what the number is tonight.
And that's the same field that they put in, in Calum as well.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I say, I'm not, I'm just a teacher.
You are.
Depending on, I know I have those.
Yes, don't, don't say you're just a teacher.
I, get, as Alison said, I have kids that are in arts that are also in sports. I would just want you, whatever decision you make tonight, if it's a yes, just be very thoughtful how this is communicated out to the community, because they'll think turf field, they'll think sports.
Right.
They won't see all the parts of it and they don't, haven't watched all the meetings and they also haven't had that much communication. I work here, I had no idea.
Right.
About any of these things until I heard it from a group in the school. So be very thoughtful after this, how you communicate it, because that's gonna have a big impact on how it's received. And I, I don't know, I don't want to make the decision for you, and I understand both parts of it, I look at that turf field every day through my little window. But it needs to be thoughtful and communicated in a way that they see the benefits of it and that people weren't pushed aside to get a turf field. Because if you're approving that first and nothing else, there's gonna be people in the community that are kind of pissed. And I get that, because I pay taxes here too.
Sure.
So just be thoughtful that if you do approve it tonight, how you communicate it thoroughly, because I think it is great and it would be great.
Yeah.
But I also know what people are giving up to get it.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you.
Have we exhausted our conversation? All right, then why don't we, why don't we move along then?
Do you want to say anything, Cindy, or you want to make any recommendation or anything? Just gotta go, link up on three.
My recommendation is to accept the site contract tonight.
Okay. So we're in the new business, nine oh two to nine oh six. No.
It's, it's, they're, they're number drawn, it's ten oh two, it's ten oh six.
Yeah, we're going, I got it.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right.
So you want to, you want to pull the first one, right?
Should we pull?
And then do the rest?
Ten point zero two out separately, all right?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so let's finish the other section.
Okay, okay.
Under new business, entertain a consent motion for item ten point zero three to ten point zero six. Second.
Discussion on any of those?
Isn't ten point zero three to ten point zero two?
No, that's a capital outlay project that is really the child bathroom.
That's a hundred thousand dollar deal that we do every year.
Is there anything, say that we can't use those capital outlay projects towards some of these other, um.
Business administrator's saying no.
We can't spend, the orders offered is fifteen million, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the capital, capital improvement project, that's all you can expect, you know, one thing, regardless of where it comes from. So you can't take money from the capital improvement project, moving from the capital outlay project into the capital improvement project to offset those expenses?
No, I don't mean to move it in to offset the costs, what I meant is picking like one piece of it that could be used.
Yeah, so actually, there's, there's about sixty million dollars worth of capital outlay projects that we've cut out of the capital, so we do, we have a, a capital outlay project list that is extensive, that we have, because if you remember, when those three groups met, the original project that they proposed was sixty million dollars. So we have pulled those pieces out and we're keeping a list of what they are to use that capital outlay money for in the future, but it, it can't supplement what is in this project. So that is happening.
Okay, any other comments, discussion on nine, ten point oh three to ten point oh six? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous? Okay, nine to ten point zero two.
Okay, so the, as it is presented here, ten point zero two is the approval of, what's the space of the demo? Two, we have two million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for effectively the turf field and the parking lot area. All right, so I guess at this point, we understand, because it's on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve item ten point zero two.
Second, there's a second, okay. Any discussion?
We've had a lot of discussions, not just, I don't like being put into this, this back up against the wall, but yeah.
Yeah, you're in a tough spot.
But before we finish that vote, I, I want to hear you one more se, one more time say that on the twenty-second, we're gonna have good numbers for whatever your walkthrough reveals next week.
Yes, we will.
All right, I've heard that a couple of times and it hasn't worked out, so I just want to make sure that is exactly what you're gonna do.
So our walkthrough includes AV and lighting, just so.
Your walkthrough includes everything that everybody behind you.
Right.
Is going to tell you a lot.
But our meeting on Thursday.
Whatever that is, and I don't personally know, I've seen the, the list from, from Mr. Flowers, but whatever comes up in that conversation, we're gonna have good numbers.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your time, your efforts.
Thank you.
For the kids at Desi and Seth.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone?
Can I make a comment though? With the aye or no?
It's gonna join discussion.
Okay. Everyone in favor of that motion? Okay, passed unanimously. Now, Mrs. Matthews, you want to vote, we voted, you know?
Oh, I was just gonna say, based on Maggie Poser coming as the department head, very positive about the changes in the priorities, so it was nice to have that be back, to help make the decision.
Okay, thank you, everyone, that was, that was a tough vote, very thoughtful, very excellent conversation, and we're in a tough spot and we will continue on with the rest of it, be assured. All right, so that brings us to.
Business office.
Business office.
Under business office, I'll entertain a motion for items eleven point zero two and eleven point zero three.
Second. Questions on those? Not all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous, thank you. I'd like to make, here, I'd like Mike to make a motion that we go into an executive session for one particular personnel.
What he said. Entertain a motion to enter executive session for a personnel.
Sorry about that.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, very much.